Seeing that we have a quorum, I'd like to call to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, October 1st, no, Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
It's a member Flaherty.
Here.
Zulik.
Here.
Rallo, nope, my bad, problem, sorry, Ruff.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Stossberg.
Here.
Asari, no, Rosenbarger.
Here.
And Daly.
Here.
Thanks so much.
All right, we'll move on to our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and in Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Today's agenda includes approval of two sets of minutes. Then we have reports, first for reports from council members, then a report from Jeff Jackson, the Transportation Demand Manager from the Economic and Sustainable Development Department on micro-mobility, mainly e-scooters and e-bikes. Then we will have reports from council committees. I don't think we have any tonight, but we have that in case. And then we will move on to the first period of public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Next, we will move on to appointments for boards and commissions, but I believe we have none of those either. Then we will have a period of debriefing from our consensus-building activities, the sessions that we held on August 14th and September 11th. But this item is pending a majority vote of the council because it's not a regular agenda item. So I don't know, should we go ahead and see if we can approve that now?
I would move to amend the normal order of business at tonight's meeting to include Agenda Item Number Six, council debrief from consensus-building activities, which would be limited to a total of 20 minutes.
Take it.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So that will be Agenda Item Six. Then we move on to legislation for first readings. We have Appropriation Ordinance 2024-08 to additionally appropriate from the Clerk's Office General Fund for Personnel Expenditures. Then we have two items for second reading, and first we have Appropriation Ordinance 2024-03 to additionally appropriate from Public Works General Fund for Personnel Expenditures. This is a carry-forward from a previous meeting. And then Ordinance 2024-18 to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding Green Acres Conservation District, which is brought to us by Green Acres Historic Designation Committee, the petitioner. Now, we did get notification yesterday that the petitioner would like to withdraw this petition, so we will have to deal with that at the appropriate time in our agenda. Then we will move on to a period of additional public comments on items not on the agenda. We will review the council's schedule and then adjourn. So we will start with the minutes.
I would like to move to approve the minutes listed from March 27th, 2024, and September 25th, 2024, as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve minutes of March 27th and September 25th of this year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those are approved, and with thanks to the clerk and her staff. Next, we will move on to reports from council members. Let's start on my left with Council Member Daly. Do you have a report tonight?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that I have a constituent meeting coming up this Saturday at the Monroe County Public Library, the Downtown Branch, Room 2A, at 2:30. So I hope to see lots of smiling faces there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Asari.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg.
No report, thank you.
Okay, let me go to the other end. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have a report? Councilmember Zulik?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Ruff?
No report tonight, thank you.
I don't have a report, other than to say that we did have a joint meeting with county and city-elected officials regarding the Convention Center expansion project this morning, and we heard about several revisions that have been made to the design of that project. So that, I think that meeting was well-attended, and I think it was very useful. And stay tuned, if you're following this project, there have been some revisions to the design, and in my view, they were very positive revisions. All right, next we will move on to a report from Jeff Jackson. Welcome, Transportation Demand Manager for the city of Bloomington.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Jeff Jackson, I'm in the ESD department. Last Tuesday evening, the Board of Public Works supported staff's recommendation to award a new e-scooter/e-bike license to Bird and to reject Lime's application. Vio did not apply, and they, Vio was licensed in July of 2023. In the spring of 2024, they did not redeploy vehicles, and they chose not to come back in this market through this application process. Lime's application was rejected because they had requested several changes to the city's indemnification language in the agreement and in the application process, and they wanted to pay less than the $10,000 one-time fee. They had requested a $3,000 prorated fee. I know what prorated means, but there was no schedule for when they would submit additional fees. Also, the city staff had provided both Bird and Lime with updated and increased license fee requirements, that Bird met our requirements while Lime decided not to amend their application. So last week, effective last Tuesday, Bird was awarded a new application. I'd be happy answering any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Asari.
Thank you so much. In terms, then, of demand on these micro-transit and micro-mobility, let's call them devices, but vehicles, does the one, that leaves us with one supplier in town, is that correct?
Yes, I think all three operators had a goal of ultimately, one day, being the single provider.
Okay.
Given the finite amount of business available for those type of operators. So Bird is excited about the new year, and we have a meeting scheduled Thursday with how we're going to ramp up their operations plan to fill that gap.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Jackson? Councilmember Daly.
Sorry, so just to confirm that I understood what you said, when you talk about ramping up operations, then that likely means Bird would be increasing the number of their scooters within Bloomington, adding more to the...
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg.
So is Bird going to have scooters and bicycles?
Yes, e-bikes and e-scooters. Last year, there was a 25% ratio requirement for e-bikes. The city increased that ratio to 35%, and Bird has agreed to do that. We also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are there other first-round questions? I will ask one, then. I've had many complaints from constituents about e-scooters blocking sidewalks. Can you talk about what the city administration is doing to try to prevent that problem?
Well, I think it'd be more efficient to manage one operator with those complaints. I've been assigned to take the lead on this role about two months ago, mid-July. Since that time, I've been receiving all the U reports that are generated related to e-scooters and e-bikes. I contact same-day the operator and ask them to respond within two hours, and that's the way I plan on attacking it in the future. I have talked to some constituents, and it'll be an ongoing challenge, but I believe that the new corrals, they've been in there for about a year in downtown Bloomington, have been effective, and by and large, have removed a lot of those complaints.
If I may just follow up, most of the complaints that I've received are not in the downtown area, they're in the neighborhoods around downtown.
Right.
Is, and that doesn't seem to have been abated by the corrals, or with more time passing.
Yeah, the goal is to replicate that corral system because of the success in downtown, and locate them in the neighborhood. I've talked with the folks in Public Works, and we're standing by to do that. I've asked Bird to be ready to answer questions about their recommendations where these corrals should go, based on data they've generated, as well as identifying low-income areas and making sure that those units are priced appropriately in those areas.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Asari.
Again, thank you. In terms of, outside of corrals, are we using any other techniques to nudge, to change the places that people are parking, et cetera? Like, are we using geofencing, and how are we enforcing that?
Well, we are associated with the corrals, not as much outside of the area, of the downtown area. But again, two months into this process, I'm telling you here today, we'll have a plan for replicating the success that we have with the corrals in downtown and elsewhere in the community.
Could I have a follow-up? And so, I don't know if it's a super-relevant follow-up, but it is an important question. Do we, are we tracking the amount of injuries that are associated with use of any of these, any of these operators' vehicles in Bloomington?
I don't know that we have a specific report that identifies that information, but based on the past, where I've been indirectly involved, I'm confident we'll have a handle on all the injuries, and hopefully continue to encourage our operators to provide the appropriate safety training and appliances necessary to reduce the overall potential for injury.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Stossberg.
When you have to process one of these U reports, say, when a scooter gets left somewhere inappropriate, and you have to make those phone calls, et cetera, is the company getting fined at that point? Because don't we have some kind of a fine structure in place that's supposed to...
Well, I, yes, there ha, Public Works has been enforcing the ordinance when it comes to violating the terms of the ordinance. When I get the U report, I immediately contact the operator, and if it appears that it's an enforcement issue, I contact Public Works' Parking Division. And there's been occasions where they've sent out people, and they were cited, and other cases where they weren't.
Do you know how, how many fines and fees have been collected, or can you find out that information?
I heard, I don't know, I can follow up with you, didn't give you that exact information?
I'm curious about that, just because we do hear a lot of complaints about it, and we do have fines in place.
Right.
And I think that it would be good to enforce the, the regulations that we have. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Mr. Jackson? Councilmember Asari.
One last set of questions. So thinking, obviously, about demand, and we've talked about, we've talked about helping walkways, and then also about well-being of users, I'm really interested in how well our partnership is working with any of these providers, but particularly with Bird now, as the lone provider in terms of providing data around, you know, around their use. Like, are they sharing data around use for us to better understand how our residents are, you know, trying to get around, where they have demand, and so on and so forth? And are there plans to better leverage that relationship to better understand mobility in our city?
Yeah, I can't speak too much to what's happened in the past, but moving forward, I'm going to make sure that they meet the requirements of the ordinance in their license application. And again, Bird's been very responsive. I think Lime had come to the conclusion that they needed to phase out of here unless they were the sole operator, which is why they weren't as responsive with their application. The day after, the Board of Public Works made a determination, Lime sent me an email agreeing with it and saying they would be ramping down. So just from a manager's standpoint, you know, I think it's easier to manage one company and make sure they provide a level of service that we require. Often, U reports would come in, and they just would say there's an e-scooter, and, you know, calling three companies to find out whose e-scooter is, or who made the report, and it just became a little inefficient. But, you know, it's my responsibility, so I'm going to stay on top of it.
Does Bird have a local team in place? Do they have local employees?
Yes. They, part of their requirements was that they provided the address, the local address, and that's another issue with Lime. They've been operating out of Indianapolis, so that's, I think that's part of the reason why they haven't been as responsive, and to quote Lee Aaron Foley, they're not as committed to the business model because of what they felt like was less of an opportunity to make a profit.
And speaking of that, what has Bird committed paying to the city?
We asked both Bird and Lime to consider increase in license fees from 10 and 15 cents per trip to 30 cents per trip, flat rate, for whether it's an e-bike or e-scooter. And I had a graduated system where if one applicant came, it would be $10,000 per operator. If two applicants submitted, it'd be $15,000 per operator. And if the, ultimately, if one applicant was awarded a license, then it would be $30,000. So we've already got half of that from Bird, and I expect to get the rest of it soon. I know there's been some concern about the community of citizens and the council about, and staffs as well, about whether or not the city's subsidizing these private operators. So we wanted to make sure that we were getting a reasonable fee, so that, you know, Adam from Public Works had suggested maybe we earmark that 30 to build the new corrals in the neighborhoods. So again, Lime wasn't interested in any of those new terms, and Bird has accepted all of them.
And so you feel that the annual license fee plus the per-ride payments from Bird will cover the costs of both new corrals and enforcement?
I do, based on the analysis we did for the last 12 months, and also ultimately a positive impact to the city's general fund is the amount received from enforcement and citations.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jackson? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to reports from council committees. Councilmember Stossberg.
Hi, good evening. I do just want to give one last report from the Hiring Committee, the ad hoc Hiring Committee, who has hired a new council attorney. Council Attorney Laner is over at the table with Deputy Attorney Kulak now, and I just want to welcome her to staff, and we're very glad that she's here. She started yesterday. So thank you very much, and I think that ad hoc committee has finished its work now.
Thank you, welcome, Ms. Laner. Laner. Next, we move on to reports from the public, meaning public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. And individuals who would like to comment can step forward to the podium. There should be a sign-in sheet there, and then you would state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes. And Deputy Attorney Kulak, can you please make the announcement for people on Zoom?
Yes, if you are on Zoom and would like to make a comment, you may do so by raising your hand. You can find that in the Reactions tab, or if you cannot find it there, in the More tab. And if you need assistance, you can send a chat to the meeting host, and we can help.
All right, well, let's start here in council chambers.
Good evening, my name is Joe Davis, and I come to you tonight as a candidate for Monroe County Council at large. And as I've been speaking to my constituents about the proposed Convention Center expansion, overwhelmingly, people either have no opinion, or they do not wish it to take place at such an expense and such a valuable property, robbing us of higher uses, and bankrupting us with ongoing maintenance based on the upkeep of this structure, which we will own. As I've mentioned before, the CIB is composed solely of groups that are looking to promote tourism for Bloomington. That does nothing for the residents of Bloomington, it only fattens the purses of a few small businesses downtown who are already probably usurping the public's goodwill. The, as was mentioned, there was a presentation this morning at the Convention Center for the elected officials from both the City Council and the County Council, the commissioners, and this presentation was put forth by Schmidt and Associates, who did the conceptual design work, not with the public, but just with these cheerleaders for creating unnecessary commerce that does not do anything for the general public. It only brings us pain. It only brings us, outside-of-town yahoos are coming in to host basketball tournaments, volleyball tournaments, and pickleball tournaments. This is being proposed as a solution to the IU campus not having any students in the summertime. Well, guess what? IU has tons of sports facilities. They would love to host basketball tournaments, volleyball tournaments, pickleball tournaments, and you know what? They'll be picking up all the trash. It won't be the citizens of Bloomington will be paying for it. And even the mayor said today that the proposal will not provide parking, because there is no onsite parking. The 4th Street parking garage is going to serve that purpose. And this is absolutely ridiculous. The best use for this is the Charlotte T. Zitlow Beacon of Social Equity and Justice Campus, where the courts and the jail will all be located. Thank you very much.
Deputy Attorney Kulak, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to comment?
No hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll go to the next person here in council chambers.
Hello, I'm Greg Alexander. I just wanted to say how awesome this timer is, right here. Such an improvement. I want to take a moment to reflect on the meeting today between the CIB and the City Council. I appreciate that Councilmember Piedmont Smith asked about a connection to the B-line. The answer was roughly that it's an afterthought. They're thinking about putting that connection 500 feet south of the actual Convention Center building, and the architect was really explicit that she was focused on the loading docks, adding new loading docks at the new building and removing loading docks at the old building, or, and keeping the loading docks at the old building as well, even though they have the durable tube. They're just not taking the B-line seriously, even though that's a premier connection to the businesses that we're trying to give more business to. I also appreciate that Mayor Thompson was such a clear communicator on the garage question. She said, make no mistake, they need a garage. They just aren't putting one on the plans now because they don't have funding for one, but they're looking for funding for one, that's pretty clear. That's, you know, it's 2024, and our vision for economic development is let's build a parking garage so that people can drive cars here, because that's our community value that we're trying to press upon the world. And I just wanted to sound an alarm bell about Bloomington Transit. This is way outside of my expertise, I don't know what's productive, but the 6th Route that serves campus and a bunch of apartment buildings, it was every 20 minutes in 2019, all the way until 7:00 PM, and now it's every 40 minutes in the afternoon. Like, we've got less service than in 2019. They're leaving kids high and dry, kids are giving up on the bus because of this. It's a disaster. I don't have any idea what needs to be done, but we can't really dream about having bus rapid transit, of dedicating lane miles to the bus, if we can't run the 6 at at least the level that we ran it in 2019. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom at this time? Okay, we'll go to the next person here in chambers.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I was at the joint meeting, the joint session today, the 29th public meeting of the CIB, which was pretty hard to believe. And I thought it was a very productive meeting. I know Madam President Piedmont Smith sort of pushed for this, and I thought it was, hopefully, a roadmap ahead to other joint meetings with other elected officials. And you forget how many likable people that are in the best interest of the community are elected. Not necessarily I would vote for all of them, but they are very much people in the best interest. And I think having that in the room, the energy was incredibly positive. I thought the design, that the presentation that Schmidt and Associates did showed how it had evolved based on the public feedback, which you're not, you don't quite get here. But I looked, as Mayor Thompson said, this is like, maybe the word annexation, some other joint meetings should be in the pipeline for that. Speaking of the Convention Center, the chamber had its 109th annual meeting last Thursday at a sold-out evening event. Mostly, it's at lunches. We had Councilmember Zulik was there, and we had, it was weeks in advance, it was sold out, 450 people. The feedback we get, not surprisingly, larger Convention Center, and I couldn't agree more with that. Speaking of elect, connect, and election, we are doing our community election event a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, the 9th. Now, it's a special time at 3:00 at the John Waldron Art Center, open to the public. It'll have a cash bar, and we'll have hors d'oeuvres there. It'll feature District 62 State House race, which is going to be the most competitive in this state, and District 3 of the county commissioners. So we're just going to do it in those two, but I would hope that we have some of the fine council members here joining us, and being recognized, by the way, which we always like to do at our chamber events. Where I was just at, and I wanted to bring this to your attention if you have not been following along, the county's doing their CDO right now, doing some changes in some public meetings. Today was the second part of a continuation meeting that I spoke on last week. But a group of us, the BEDC, the Board of Realtors, the Baske Habitat for Humanity, did this little thing called a white paper. It's on our side, it's on the BED's side, I'm sure it's on some others. But instead of reading the 300 pages of the county, if you want to kind of get a bird's-eye view of what is happening there at the courthouse, it is a wonderful resource. I happen to write part of it, which gives me a more ample reason to plug it. But I just want to make sure we're following along with what other units of government are doing. It's important, whether that's Bloomington Transit, whether that's the library, whether that's a school district, that we all are sort of in this together. I thank you for your time tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom by this time?
No hands raised at the moment.
Thank you. And I don't see anybody else... Thank you. And I don't see anybody else in council chambers approaching the podium, so we'll end this first open public comment session. I don't think we have appointments of residents to boards and commissions. But I would like to appoint an ad hoc committee to review the salaries for elected officials, which are to be set by the city council by the end of this year. And I'd like to appoint to that committee Sidney Zulik, Matt Flaherty, Kate Rosenbarger, and Hopi Stossberg. And I think they've all agreed to serve, so thank you in advance for investigating and making a recommendation to us about elected official salaries, which we'll need to go into an ordinance before the end of the year. Councilmember Stossberg?
Can I ask a question about that? Are you going to appoint a chair as well, or do you want us to figure that out?
I guess I would prefer that you have a first meeting and decide amongst yourselves. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a debrief discussion from the consensus-building activities that we've held in August and September. So, we had two sessions where we were assisted by the Community Justice and Mediation Center, CGAM, to hold discussions with members of the public on the topic of homelessness, and specifically, street homelessness. And we had some group conversations, and we had some extensive notes that were taken, and some feedback also given during those meetings. So, I wanted to, first of all, ask my colleagues what their initial feedback was, how successful those two sessions were, what worked well and what didn't. And we have 20 minutes for this conversation, and there are a couple of other issues I'd like to get to, like, what are we going to do with what we learned? And then, how will we schedule such sessions or similar sessions in the future? So, I'd love to just open it up as far as what worked, what didn't work, general reactions among my colleagues. Councilmember Zulik?
Well, I thought it was really helpful, just in terms of narrowing in on what our Bloomington community thought would be productive and what wouldn't necessarily help us combat homelessness. What my group kind of narrowed in on was that legalizing or incorporating single-room occupancy into our UDO, or is it Unified Development Ordinance? Thank you. That that would be a lot more productive than just changing the name, or changing the definition of family within the UDO. So, I felt like it was helpful in just figuring out what to focus on.
Thank you. Others? Councilmember Stossberg?
I thought generally, community engagement was really high, which is good, and they were well organized. What I wrote down in my response that I prepared was that I'm not sure how productive they are in terms of actually moving legislation forward. So, I think councilmembers, it looks kind of right, you know, in terms of hearing maybe some things that our community is maybe more interested in, but they certainly don't quite seem the place that we can actually, like, write legislation and get those ideas down on paper in a forum that can go through the rest of our processes. So, maybe useful in some ways and not in others.
Councilmember Daley?
I just want to focus or point out that I really appreciated the community involvement, how many people did show up and were eager to work with us. And I loved sitting in a group of our constituents and our community members and getting to hear directly from them. And I was really heartened by that, but then it also made me realize that, you know, there is then more pressure on us to actually act and do something. They are looking at us more closely. And it made me more motivated to make sure that we do have follow-throughs. So, I really do want to make sure that, you know, we commit to following through. So, what that looks like is, obviously, you know, we did have some follow-up talks about that, and it's going to have to continue. And I think, you know, unfortunately, not enough of the community was aware that we were doing this. And I don't know how to make more people aware that they are invited and that we want their involvement, and that their involvement is actually beneficial and that they're not wasting time. But I would love to find a way to get more people involved who feel that maybe they haven't been involved.
Other feedback? Councilmember Ruff?
You know, I started on the council before this term for a long time, and it was really refreshing, I felt, to have that sort of break from the more formalized structure of a typical council meeting. It felt like a big, better organized-than-regular constituent meeting, giant constituent meeting almost, with some structure and some focus, though, and a topic to discuss specifically. And instead of seeing, you know, reading survey responses or reading something written, it was really meaningful to me, I think, to, because in a survey, you don't really know the context, you don't really, you're assuming certain things about the understanding and framing of the questions, all these things. But to see people responding and deliberating and talking, putting real context around the questions, rather than guessing, like, with the survey responses, you know, was really valuable to me as a representative, wanting to hear from people. I would say, I have a feeling that, and as Councilmember Daley said, there's no way to make people participate. You can't make people come out. But I do feel like it was where it fell short, or one area where they fell short was, I didn't feel like there was really the robust diversity of viewpoints of the groups that I know are out there in the community, that have some thoughts and concerns and direct experiences with this, that were as present as I feel like they should have been. I mean, just for example, I have heard over my time so much from businesses that are impacted by this issue, small businesses, downtown businesses. And, I mean, Christopher was there, of course, and provided some valuable input, but I just felt like there were some neighborhoods, some business representatives, that just, whether they just didn't feel like they had the time, or whether it was going to be productive, or whether they felt they would be welcomed, or what. I mean, there's no way to know. But I just feel like in future efforts, and I think there should be future efforts, future consensus-building activities, really exploring some way to do more outreach and really encourage people to engage, knowing that we can't make them, we can't make people respond. And then the other thing is, within the breakout groups, which I thought were really valuable, I don't know how you do this, I have no idea how one would do this, but to distribute, I don't even know what you call them, I don't want to call them interest groups, because everybody has the same ultimate goal, right? And someone said at the start of the meeting, I think it was Christopher also from the chamber, said, everybody, even though he voted for somebody or not, his heart's in the place of doing what's right for the community, helping the community. And of course, everybody who's there has that in heart and mind. But to get a distribution in the groups of, in each breakout group, of the diversity of perspectives or experiences, to make sure that's well distributed amongst all the breakout groups. And I don't have any idea how you do that, but that's an area, I think, where we need to try to think of some way to address in a future CBA.
Councilmember Osaria, do you have any feedback?
Sure.
I call you out specifically because I believe this idea originated with you.
I think, first and foremost, that, I mean, we selected a very tough topic to start off with, and I think that was great. I think what was very nice about it was that we positioned ourselves more in the listening than the talking position, which I think is fantastic. But I think furthermore, I think that focus on what it is that council does, and actually focusing our conversations around our action, I think, was the, you know, the sort of greatest thing that came out of the conversation, right, is that we focused in on, here are the levers that we can pull, and we want to have a participatory, you know, democracy around this. I think that's great. I think as originally conceived, we were thinking more about consensus amongst ourselves, and it turned into think something much broader, which was sort of helping to build consensus in the community, you know, which I think is a much more complex and longer-term thing. But I really look forward to trying it with other topics. You know, I think part of the challenge that we faced in this, to both Councilmember Stossberg and Councilmember Ruff and Councilmember Daley's point, is that the community that we were inviting in had, in the recent time, around the time we were doing the CBA, had been doing a lot of activity. And so, you know, we might have contributed to an overtaxation of this group. And, I mean, but I also have a bit of like an action bias, so my concern with all of it is that, I mean, with the listening and the talking that we did, and it really, I don't know if we're any more close to taking the actions that, you know, that have been proposed than we were sort of pre-CBA. So, I think that's maybe something to consider as we continue moving forward, which is how do we build an action to these type of procedures?
Well, that's a good segue. So, how can we follow through with the two sessions we had on homelessness to take action that would, you know, address or follow through with a lot of what we heard? So, the first, you know, the first meeting, we heard all kinds of feedback about homelessness and all kinds of ideas. Then, we tried to narrow the scope to kind of UDO issues. And, you know, I agree with Councilmember Daley, we need to follow through, else people won't come next time. Or even fewer people will come next time. I think we didn't have more people in the first place because there's some cynicism about participating in government at all. So, how would folks follow up on the sessions that we had? And I guess the most obvious answer would be to enact or ask the planning department and the plan commission to put SROs into the UDO, so single-room occupancy as an allowed use, and in, you know, a relatively wide area or relatively large number of zones. But what do you all think would be the next step? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Well, I was going, I mean, I was going to talk about that, but maybe in greater detail, if that's fine, the changing our UDO. But I guess also in general, right, I think it is hard, like, there are some of us, right, that are working on making changes to the UDO. Specifically, you know, one bullet point there is SROs and walkable areas and all areas. I think there are some people, it's just that there are nine of us up here, and people are doing different levels of action, right, from zero to a lot, I would say. So, I mean, I just met with planning staff about SROs, and I think it is just like, maybe it is just self-selecting of who does the work and who doesn't. But like, I am happy to be working with the people who are doing the work on council to change our UDO so that we really, like, take action steps from our CBA that we did, and just in general, to like, make it easier for people to live here, whether you have a home right now or not. And so, like, in greater detail, right, I just had a meeting, like I said, with planning staff, where we started looking at the idea of adding SROs into the UDO, or trying to do that, where it's like, what are the setbacks? How many units are allowed? How big of a footprint might be allowed for this type of building? And like, where would they be allowed and where would they not be, right? And so, I guess I think it is just, probably the easiest is to work with the people up here who want to do the work and just keep moving forward. Is that an okay answer for now? I guess, in a way, I wonder if you're asking, like, how can we hold ourselves accountable to that, maybe? Or to the work, to getting it done? And sometimes, I think we just have to say it out loud that, I don't know, like, some of us want to bring this UDO, these proposed UDO changes by the end of the year, right? So, I mean, I think that's publicly saying, like, we had that meeting, and I think some situations are just like incredibly dire. And so, I don't know, in a way, I want to just say thank you to the people up here who are working on it.
Any other ideas for moving forward on this particular topic? Councilmember Ruff?
I don't have an idea at this point, but I did want to say, I know that our council president, Piedmont Smith, worked really hard and took the lion's share of work to pull those first two CBA meetings off. And I want to recognize that and emphasize that we need to share more of that burden in the future with whoever's in leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember Stossberg?
I just wanted to know what Councilmember Rosenbarger said about, you know, it's, we just have to do the work. And I also have been having several meetings over the last several months, not necessarily directly about SROs, but about other aspects of the UDO that could potentially be altered in order to encourage more of what we need and discourage the things that we don't necessarily need. And there are lots and lots of different directions that we can go. And in those CBAs, we talked about the two possibilities of SROs and the definition of family, but there are lots of other pieces of the UDO that impact development and impact affordability and impact what is able to be built. And it really does come down to who's able and willing to do that work, because it takes a lot of time to align all of the information and ideas to make sure that the changes that are being considered are positive changes. So, that's all. Thanks.
So, I guess I'll weigh in myself. The, I thought the CBAs were helpful, but were also kind of revealed to me how there's a disconnect between what most residents expect of us and what we can actually do, at least on the topic of homelessness. Because a lot of what people want us to do are, well, first of all, they want us to solve the problem, which, as we all know, is much more complicated than just a silver bullet could fix. But secondly, a lot of what they want us to do is actually part of the executive function of the mayor and her administration. And so, it was just, it wasn't frustrating to talk to constituents, because it's always good, and I always appreciate hearing different perspectives. But the process was a little bit frustrating in that I came away thinking, okay, we can do some things, but people are not going to be satisfied with what we do. But I think we can, as has been mentioned, work on changes to the UDO, which, you know, I've been working with some others on. And the single-room occupancy, I think, is some relatively low-hanging fruit in that I think there's a lot of support for allowing that type of development. I think it will also require, from the executive branch, some incentives and some working with the private sector and trying to, you know, actually finance such a thing. And I think they're willing. One other thing I want to be sure to say, and I know we are closing in on, we just have a few more minutes for this segment of our agenda, but the CBA consensus-building activity, which was an idea put forward by Councilmember Osaria, and that phrase is something that some scholars use, but I dislike the phrase, and I would very much like to change it, because even in talking with CGAM, which helped us so much, and which has, you know, they have expertise in community deliberation, you're not going to get consensus. And just the word consensus is highly ideal. And, and just the word consensus is, is highly idealized by, by most people who hear it. And, you know, what we're really after is, as I think Councilmember Osare has said, for somebody to not have a reason to vote no, like to be able to accept something and move forward rather than everybody agreeing. And that, there is a distinction there. And so I would very much like to get rid of that moniker and, and call these public deliberation meetings, which I think is more accurate. Now, in the final minute or two, any thoughts on how to move ahead? Because I, thank you, Councilmember Ruff. I, I did spend a lot of time and more, I'm not resentful of the time, but I don't feel like it's my job to speak for everybody as we organize these in the future. So any ideas on how we can go about that? Councilmember Flaherty?
I think we have to fund it and staff it if we want to do these well. I think it's a commitment we've tried to make that other communities aren't doing. It goes actually directly to the conversation we were having about budget and elected salaries as well, and the capacity demanded of the city council based on the expectations we set and the community sets for how we're going to do business here, what we're trying to engage in. It's not sustainable at all to try to have council members fully organizing and setting these things up. Also, it's not within our wheelhouse or expertise necessarily. We need professional support, whether that's hired or contracted, even though we've already had some, I think we would have to continue with that. So that's really vital. I think also, as we think about scheduling for next year, we could leave open spaces for these, but not necessarily literally schedule them all. And that way they can be brought in, not automatically, but as needed, responsive to legislative or policy proposals or other emergent issues of importance in the community. I think those are my thoughts. I think it's a good first step. I think that it's going to necessarily be iterative and evolving for a couple of different use cases for how best we make productive use of this, including, you know, taking action.
We are at our time, but is there any other suggestion? Councilmember Stossberg?
Just as a question, we have one more of those scheduled right now in November, right?
We do.
Okay.
And I would say even if we, we fund and staff these kind of activities, we need somebody from council, maybe a committee, to come up with topics and to guide the work of any staff we might engage. So let's think about that. We are now at the 20 minutes, so I suppose we should move on. Thank you all for your feedback. Now we will move to, what will we move to? Legislation for first readings.
I'd like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-08 be introduced and read by, by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk Bolden, would you please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2024-08 to additionally appropriate from the clerk's office general fund for personnel expenditures. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance funds the position authorized in ordinance 2024-15 to add a deputy clerk responsible for communications and outreach position in the city clerk's office.
Thank you. And that item will be set for a public hearing on October 16th at the regular session. Yes, on to second readings and resolutions.
All right. I would like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-03 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2024-03 to additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for Personnel Expenditures. The synopsis is as follows. This appropriation ordinance funds the position authorized in ordinance 2024-10 to add a facilities asset and operations controller.
I move appropriation ordinance 2024-03 be adopted.
Second.
All right. And it is a third reading of this ordinance tonight because the council had some questions at our last reading on September 18th, specifically for Adam Wasen, Director of Public Works, who was unable to be here. So is Mr. Wasen on Zoom this evening or who's going to present this?
I think I just saw him walk by, so I think.
Is he in the building?
Yes.
Anybody want to go on the hall and try to find him?
Sorry, sorry, I was talking about the cleaning crews and I thought the council, or Clerk Bolden was up first, so my apologies. Adam Wasen, Public Works Director, thank you for having me this evening. The request this evening is to, for the additional appropriation for a position in the Facilities Department. And all honesty, this was an oversight. So when we did the salary ordinance back in June, the additional appropriation ordinance did not accompany that. When I say it was an oversight, I can tell you based on my past experiences over the years, whenever we did salary ordinance, the appropriation ordinance would always accompany that. I think it had somewhat to do with new staff and just a misunderstanding on how that was going to be put forward. So we are asking to fund the facilities in, the position in the Facilities Division, which is a asset and operations position that we added to assist that really small division. And the total impact in this appropriation ordinance is $72,000. I got some questions. I talked with a couple of the different council members about what that $72,000 represents. That represents the amount of salary from that June date forward, as well as replenishing our temporary part-time line that we had been paying that position out of. The temporary part-time line that we would like to replenish, we do have some plans for those funds yet this fall, which includes some of our asset management efforts as well as some temporary part-time assistance with our downtown cleanup efforts. So with that, I hope that we can get your approval this evening and I'm here to answer any questions. And I will add, actually, I apologize that I wasn't at your first meeting for this. I was on scoreboard duty at one of the high school soccer games that evening and we thought it was going to be pretty easy, so, but yeah, happy to be here for questions tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wasen? Okay, so I, I will ask one, of course. You didn't think you were getting off that easy. So really you are asking for funds so that you can hire temporary employees to tackle a few projects before the end of this year?
What we're actually asking for is the, for the salary from June on, as well as the replenishment of the funds that we had used previously. So it does actually fund the position that was created, as well as replenish that temporary line.
So from, what, after this is approved to the end of the year, the temporary position will be paid from?
Yes.
A nontemporary line?
It'll go into category one and we can move those within the category one. So, yeah, but yes, it will, but it will fund both the temporary positions that we still plan to use yet this year. We've foregone hiring those positions up until this point, not knowing how this was going to play out. So we do plan to still hire a couple temporary part-time positions to help with the downtown specialists and the Brighton B-Town crews as far as some downtown issues that we're, we know will have this fall yet. And then also a temporary part-time position just for a couple months to help with our building inspection services. So it, it does both. It funds the full-time position and replenishes that temporary line.
Okay. So if we're looking at this from an outcomes-based budgeting approach, we are, our outcome that we're seeking is to do these projects with temporary employees?
Yes, to do the plan projects.
And shore up funding for this new position.
There we go. Yes, perfect.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Wasen? All right, thank you. We will go to public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on appropriation ordinance Yes, please.
And before you start, I'd like to let everyone know that this public comment period is a continuation of the public hearing that was held on the September 18th regular session. The public hearing was continued to today's date and the public comment portion constitutes the public hearing.
Thank you. Deputy Attorney Kulak. Yes, go ahead.
Hello, yes. My name is Joe Davis and I am concerned as a city resident and taxpayer that this might be a backdoor way to hire more personnel, sort of going through the regular channels. The public, the public needs to know where these monies are coming and just cobbling together budgets to hire folks and then later asking for forgiveness seems a bit irresponsible. So these are my concerns and I thank you very much for listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in council chambers who would like to comment on this item? Deputy Attorney Kulak, is there anybody on Zoom?
At this time, there are no hands raised.
Okay. I think we can come back to council then for final comments on this item. Councilmember Stossberg?
Mr. Wasen stepped out, but I'll publicly thank him for talking to me about this yesterday because I had some concerns about what exactly that was being spent on and some considerations. And I just appreciate his time yesterday, walking me through that a little bit. And I'm prepared to allocate this additional expenditure tonight. Thank you.
Any other council members want to comment? I will just say in response to the public comment that we did receive that this position was approved in a public process in May and that, at that time, we did also consider the fiscal impact of approving that position. So it was all done in a public appropriate forum. If there are no other questions, comments, I think we can move approval of this and we can ask Clerk Bolden to please call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Osare?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That appropriation ordinance is approved.
I would like to move ordinance 2024-18 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2024-18 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding Green Acres Conservation District. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends the list of designated historic districts in Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code by establishing the Green Acres Conservation District. In recommending this designation, the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing and submitted a map and accompanying report to the council. The map sets forth the boundaries of the district and classification of buildings within the district. The report demonstrates how this district meets the necessary criteria. At the end of three years after adoption of this ordinance, this conservation district will elevate into a full historic district unless within 180 and 60 days before that date, a majority of the property owners provide the Historic Preservation Commission with written objections to the elevation.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2024-18 be adopted.
Second.
All right. And I think, as I mentioned earlier, there was a letter submitted to the city from the petitioner asking to withdraw the petition. Do we have the petitioner with us via Zoom? I don't see them in the audience, but.
So we got an email just a little bit after six. The petitioner is not able to attend due to illness, but I think city staff is here and can walk over the gist of the letter.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming who showed up regarding this agenda item. Yesterday morning, a letter was sent.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name for the record?
Noah Sandweiss, Historic Preservation Program Manager. Yesterday, the petitioners from the Green Acres Conservation District Development Committee submitted a letter to myself and to city council requesting the withdrawal of the proposed map that was sent by the Historic Preservation Commission to city council. Since the petitioners are not present, I'll read the letter that they sent. To the Bloomington City Council, we are writing to formally withdraw our application for a conservation district in the Green Acres neighborhood at this time. The decision comes after much reflection on the current circumstances with the goal of building broader consensus and strengthening our case for the future. Please know that this is not a retreat, but rather a strategic step to ensure that we can ultimately protect our neighborhood as outlined in the city's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan clearly states that preserving modest housing is imperative to solving the housing crisis and we are committed to aligning our efforts with that vision. Our neighborhood is home to historic and cultural assets that we believe must be safeguarded for future generations. If, and we will continue to work to achieve this important goal. While we recognize that the council is unlikely to support our application at this time, we are cognizant of the complex issues surrounding this proposal. However, we remain steadfast in our dedication to protecting our community's character, heritage, and modest housing, and will go forward with our efforts despite this temporary withdrawal. In the coming months, we look forward to engaging with each of you to explore points of common ground and mutual understanding. We are eager to find solutions that benefit both the neighborhood and the broader city, and we believe that together we can develop a plan that reflects our shared values. Please know that we will be back and we remain hopeful that future discussions will lead to a positive outcome for the Green Acres neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to continuing this dialogue and working with you toward a solution that benefits all. Sincerely, Dr. Lois Sabo-Skelton, Chair of the Green Acres Conservation District Development Committee. So at this point, my understanding is that the city council still has to make a vote on the map that was submitted on whether to approve or to reject.
I move we take that vote right now. Second.
All right. Since we need a two-thirds vote to call the question, I will ask Clerk Bolden to please call the roll on the motion.
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
I can't comment, which is too bad, so I guess I just have to say yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't actually hear what you said.
Yes.
Osare?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Oh, and Flaherty?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
All right. So the motion to call the question passes by over two-thirds of a vote. I believe that before we actually vote on the ordinance, we could have council comment? No?
No, because you, you moved. The motion to, for the previous question passed by a two-thirds majority, so that the next thing that happens is a vote.
Okay.
If you so wish to make any comments after that, you probably can.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. So we call on Clerk Bolden once again to call the roll and this is on the actual ordinance.
Councilmember Ruff?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Stossberg?
No.
Osare?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Daly?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
So the ordinance fails by a vote of zero to eight. And now, yes, Councilmember Stossberg, did you want to comment?
I do want to comment, just because I know that there are people in the audience who came to speak on this matter, and usually during periods of public comment, our general periods of public comment, we don't allow people to speak on items that are on the agenda, but I just want to propose that we allow people who are here this evening to, that wanted to speak on this, be allowed to speak in our additional item of public comment, number nine, if they still wish to speak about it tonight.
Second. Whatever that motion was.
Point of order was that a motion to suspend the rules to allow for...
I'm not sure. Do I have to suspend, suspend the rules in order to allow for? Great, then yes, it is a motion to suspend the rules to allow for public comment during the additional period of public comment on the Green Acres proposal.
Second.
Did that make sense, Clerk Bolden?
Mm-hmm.
That was not convincing.
It made sense.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
We, we should do a roll call vote, sorry. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules to allow people to comment on the Green Acres ordinance during our open public comment period at the end of this meeting?
Actually, I suppose we already took a vote, now we're just clarifying via roll call. I was going to make a comment, but maybe that's not in order. I take it back.
Yes, we, but I also clarified the motion, so if you would also like to clarify something, I would allow that.
I was among the yeas, I intend to continue with that vote, but just noting, we also have a limited amount of time in that section of the agenda of 20 minutes total, which to be...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, thank you, thank you.
That is true. All right, Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll on the motion? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
No.
Daley?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Ruff?
No.
All right, so that motion is adopted by a vote of five to three. So that means if individuals would like to speak about the Green Acres Historic District, which has now been voted down, you could still do so when we get to that point of public comment in the meeting, which is shortly. Let's see, and actually, that is where we are. We are at the portion of the meeting where we have twenty, up to 25 minutes of additional public comment, either on items not on the agenda or on the Green Acres Historic District.
Madam President?
Yes.
Given the kind of unique context of this particular period, might, might we, might it be prudent to ask for a show of hands for how many people intend to comment? Sometimes we, if it's 15 people, sometimes we limit amounts accordingly to make sure everybody has a term. I don't know if that's appropriate here. A suggestion.
Sure, how many people would like to comment during this period?
I apologize. So, I'm looking here at a motion to suspend the rules, and it usually requires a two-thirds vote, not majority.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't think of that.
I'm looking, there are, there are some exceptions, but I'm, I'm trying to look through the exceptions, but it usually requires a two-thirds vote.
Okay, and two-thirds would have been six, and we had five in favor, so I'm sorry, we may not, may not be able to permit comments on something that was on the agenda. Well, let's just give our legal team another couple of minutes to determine that.
If people are not allowed to comment publicly, please, if you would like to send us an email, either at council@bloomington.in.gov...
I'm getting an email for not allowed to comment.
Okay.
Madam President, may I also make a brief comment?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Just noting that, that the unfortunate circumstance, quirky things like this happen sometimes, that meetings don't proceed in the way everyone expected them to proceed. I'm also happy to stick around for a bit afterwards and talk to people if we can't formally have a comment period now, so...
As am I.
No doubt.
I am as well.
Okay, so it looks like it still would require a two-thirds vote. The...
Is that two-thirds of the people present, or two-thirds of the entire council?
Two-thirds majority, so that's six of nine. If it relates to parliamentary procedure, it requires a two-thirds vote for its suspension, which I believe in the general period for public comment, there is a, the rules are posted on the council website, and it states that it is on items not on the agenda, so that it, that relates to the council's regular procedure.
All right, so I'm, I'm sorry, but we cannot take public comment on the Green Acres Historic District at this time, but as was mentioned by a few of my colleagues, I also would be willing to stay after the meeting, and we could even leave the mics on and we can...
I'll make some general comments.
Yes, general comments are fine.
I'll make general comments about historic petitions.
Yes.
Before a neighborhood is required to protest...
Oh, can you please state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Jim Boer, from Clendenning Johnson Boer. Before a neighborhood is drawn into a historic designation, is my suggestion that the petitioner be held to the same standard that the neighbors are required to adhere to if they are to decertify the historic designation after three years. That is, that 50 property owners and 60% of the neighbors or the owners are required to decertify the designation. It's my suggestion that when the petitioner comes in, that they be held to the same standard by your person that is taking the petition, so that the petitioner can't be a single person, can't be one or two people in a neighborhood, but instead that they have that same level of support within the neighborhood, so that we know that property owners in the neighborhood are not drawn into this process and then have to defend their property rights before they know that in three years, they're going to have to gather up the same amount of support to get rid of a designation, and so that they would have to, they'd have only a minute section of the property owners bring them into a process. Seems to me only fair that if that's the requirement to decertify, it ought to be the same threshold to certify. General comments, and general comments that should apply to anyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make general comments on historic preservation or comments on anything else that was not on the agenda?
Thank you, councilmembers. Quick question, my comments would be if an ordinance...
Oh, what is your name, please?
Terry Amsler, how do you do? Good to see you. My question is, is it in order to make a comment about the consensus building activities? It was not an action item, but I didn't know if that's still outside of what I should be commenting on at this time in the meeting.
That was on the agenda, so...
So if that's, then I'm out of luck. Okay, you'll get an email.
Yes, please, send us an email, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
It's true, but it's also the subject of future pending meetings and other, like general, I, I don't know, my opinion would be that the chair has discretion on that particular topic because it was not an action item, and maybe we don't want to go down that road, I'm just saying.
It also was added, and we didn't actually give a period of public comment during it.
That's true, it was on the agenda pending approval. I, I would allow a comment on the so-called CBAs to, to talk about other similar type meetings in the future. Mr. Amsler, if you would like to make that comment, I would allow it. Yes? Yes. Thank you very much, I'm sorry about the confusion.
Still Terry Amsler, how do you do? Good to see you. Very briefly, I, I wanted to say thank you for the efforts you're making on the consensus building or to be named later item. It's another interesting question, though, that councilmember Piedmont Smith raises, not without merit, by the way, about the naming the language. I think that the questions, cost and benefits are always interesting for any such thing, given that it's real effort, it's real time, it's a new thing, and you have a lot done, be done. I think it's worth it, I won't go into all the reasons why. I think public trust and governance is one, and we could go on about that. I think one of the issues that was raised in comments by a number of you was affect about participation in some way, more representative, more full, more inclusive participation in such events, always a fair question. I think there is a question about how much such CBAs or whoever named, how much they are information, how much they are deliberation, how much they are consensus building, which is a design issue and a time issue, and there's no either-or elements, it's a question for your design. I will say also, the work you're going to be doing with CGM, if that's what we'll be, yay, that's fine with, I have no formal, not part of CGM per se, but you need somebody like that, it's good. The working out those relationships with a convening ent, not convening, a facilitating entity like that to go forward is really important, and I'm jumping now for time. I think the issue is for what issues and how often, which we already, you spoke to, is significant question. I am, I'm not going to go into that one, except don't make it, when we think about it, that that's the rule. It's got to be institutionalized sufficiently, sufficiently, to develop your own capacities as a body to make it work well. Lastly, there was something, on the participation side, there's one other thing, oh, almost done. I think this effort that you're making in this arena is part of something larger, big surprise, relating to public engagement, relating to the engagement callouts that are already in the comprehensive plan, relating to the boards and commissions element, relating to resident academies and their purposes and all that stuff. So think of it broadly as you do this work. Don't make it a little piece, think of it broadly for the reasons and the purposes you've already rightfully identified. And I'm sure there's more if I can think about it at the time, but I should stop, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to make a comment?
We have a bunch of folks on Zoom who've had their hands raised.
Okay. Well, let's go with the, the person here in chambers, since they've been standing there waiting patiently. Please give your name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mary Sutherland. I'm not a speaker, so I'm a tad nervous. I'm one of the owners and property manager of our office building, which is located at 1602 West Third Street. We are in front of Wheeler Mission. Our building was built before Wheeler Mission was ever there. Naturally, you understand the homeless situation, I won't go into the gory details that we find around our building, but our concern is that we cannot rent our offices, and we cannot sell our property because of Wheeler Mission. There are homeless people all around, they do damage, they leave us presence, and I know that Wheeler Mission is planning on putting up a fence around their property, so those that they're inviting to come to Wheeler Mission, they also want to exclude them from being around there, and in their plan, they don't have an area for a grassy section for those residents or for the homeless to come and to relax and have some shade. Instead, they come to our office and hang around our building and around our lawn, and like I said, it stops us from being able to rent and to sell. I live off that income. I can't, you know, we're asking the city, what are we supposed to do? We need help. You know, it's, you know, I live off social security and the rent that I get when I run out that bus, business, so we're asking for your help. I don't know how this works. Do you have comments for me, or do I go sit down?
I'm sorry, we, we've noted your, your concerns, at this point, it's not a back-and-forth conversation, but if you'd like to leave your contact information with the city clerk, then we can get back with you and try to work with you on it.
Thank you.
Deputy Attorney Kulak, do you, we have, you said you, we have people on Zoom?
Yes, we have three folks on Zoom. The first is Michael Johnson.
Okay.
Good evening, thanks for allowing me to have a conversation. I, I'm a property owner in the Green Acres neighborhood, I understand that there's not going to be comments allowed officially here, but I do remember hearing that some of the, some of the members were going to make themselves available after the meeting. I'm hopeful that there's some mechanism to allow that for those of us who are participating via Zoom remotely and are not there in person.
We will try. And what was your name, sir?
Michael Johnson.
Michael Johnson.
I'm a member and owner of Panther Realty. I'm a owner in the Green Acres neighborhood.
Okay, we will consult with our staff and see if we can keep the Zoom open for, after the meeting.
Very good, thank you.
The next person on Zoom is Kalen Marshall.
Okay, Kalen Marshall, you should be able to unmute and state your, state your name for the record, and you'd have up to three minutes.
This is Kalen Evans, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. My comments are also somewhat geared towards the Green Acres Neighborhood District, and I will shy away from those comments on the district, as we're not allowed to comment on that, but preface this to say, before this district came, before the Historic Preservation Commission, there were five demolition permits that were submitted to the Historic Preservation Commission in late April or early May. Those demolition permits were continued for weeks and weeks and weeks and months, resulting in a continuance even to an extra 30 days, I think by the hand director, all for the sake that the HPC could deny or just pass on these demolition delays, when staff had recommended that they be released, and the HPC has a necessity to decide on these demolition permits, that either each property on its own merit is worthy of being recommended to the city council for designation or released. And these five permits were week after week, hearing after hearing, pushed and pushed and pushed. The HPC then eventually got someone in the neighborhood to recommend a historic district for Green Acres. The HPC called a special hearing at the, at Breakneck Speed.
Mr. Evans? I'm sorry, but now you're really getting into the ordinance that was already voted down, that was on the agenda, so we're, we're not allowing comment on that at this time.
From there, and just ask that the city council zoom in to the conduct of the HPC, because what is going on is anti-development, it's anti-construction, it's, it's... It's anti-construction. It's... They're blockading and standing in the way of people to be able to enjoy their property rights, and this is a perfect example of what has happened with this neighborhood designation. So please check into what is going on with the HPC. Why are there 13 members on the Historic Preservation Committee? More than that's on the city council, more that's on the BZA, more that's on the plan commission. Enough is enough. Please step in and see what is going on with the Historical Preservation Commission in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an additional comment on Zoom?
We have a comment that was sent to the meeting host from Sam Dove that I can read into the record.
Okay, please go ahead.
"Save the date. The Hopewell Neighborhood Project Update is happening on Wednesday, October 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the John Waldron Arts Center. Get the scoop on the bold new neighborhood transforming the former IU Health Hospital site into a vibrant, community-focused space. From parks and public art to new housing, join the city of Bloomington as we share the latest updates and big plans for Hopewell's future." That is the comment.
Thank you. And we have one more person here in chambers.
My name is Kristin Woodworth. I am also a property owner at Green Acres. And my comment's just really quick, and it's more of just to make it public record that we were not able to speak on this topic at all. The last meeting I came to, I came specifically here from Indianapolis, and it was just the reading of it, and I understand that we were not allowed to speak. But the understanding was that tonight we would have a chance to do that. And I do get the circumstances were very weird, and you have voted it down, which is amazing. But it sounds to me like it might have just been put on a pause, and I think we need to look at how many times people can keep coming back with the same thing. I don't think that should be able to happen again and again. So either way, just for the public record, we were not able to speak. Nobody in our neighborhood was able to speak.
Duly noted. Another person here in council chambers?
Yeah, Tim Ballard. I'll make the same comment. I really appreciate those who are willing to stick around. I think this is a vital, vital topic of discussion, and people need to be heard from the public. So those of you, and I really hope Zoom can stay on as well, because I'm on several commissions within the city. I know how this kind of works. I know how important the public input is on things like this. This is a very, very broad stroke of what's happening. I agree completely with what's being said. People taking their time out to be able to come here to publicly address a very, very important issue. And the part about the historical preservation, I agree completely with that as well. This very much feels like a non-transparent thing that's happening. I think it's getting pushed along, and it is anti-development. It's very much so. And it's also against affordable housing, too. And what is the UDO... what are we here for? What is the UDO? One of their primary objectives is affordability. Constricting it with 450 houses is not the way to go. So I look forward to those of you willing to stay after. I think that's very important. And I really appreciate Councilmember Stossberg for even bringing the vote, even though it was denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in council chambers? And how are we doing on the 25 minutes for this period? Do we... Councilmember Stossberg?
We started 7:47, so 7:47 according to my clock, which is not the same as the clock on the wall. So we...
You started 21 minutes ago.
Yeah, we're good for another comment.
Okay. Please state your name for the record, and then go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sarah Alexander. And honestly, my comments were more general in nature, anyway. So regardless to the merits of historic preservation, one way or the other, I would like to draw your attention to the fact that the process by which we designate neighborhoods as worthy of distinction is wholly undemocratic. In this town, decisions about zoning and civic planning are supposed to be made by this duly-elected representative body. If I don't like the choices you make, then I can make my irritation known now and vote for a different set of officials later. But in the case of historic preservation, anybody can submit a petition to the HPC, whether their neighbors are interested in it or not. If you are... if you here on the council were to grant this petition, then begins a preliminary conservation phase consisting of the lighter regulations that some people are sold on as the final product. But at the end of the three-year span, the lighter restrictions of the conservation district are cranked up to the more onerous restrictions of the preservation district, unless 51% of the property owners object in writing. That may not sound too terrible, but in my neighborhood of Maple Heights, at the end of the three-year period, 53 people voted against elevation of the district. But that wasn't enough to defeat the seven yes votes which carried the day. To add insult to this injury, that's fewer than the nine people who started the petition in the first place. And what have my neighbors gained from this undemocratic process? Safer streets? Economic development? Environmental gains? No. They get to supplicate themselves before a committee of busybodies who frequently can't tell the difference between aesthetics and the building code. I would like to echo this earlier gentleman who suggested you investigate the doing's on of the HPC. I would like to second that. They get, my neighbors, get to waste money and time trying to satisfy some tiny minority of self-interested landowners whose biggest fear seems to be that somebody dare make a change to a building. In short, before you vote on this or any historic preservation district, please stop to ask yourself who you want to be in charge of the city's development. Should it be the majority of people who live in a neighborhood? Should it be the officers that were duly-elected by the people? Or should it be in the hands of a small group of busybodies who have thrust their neighbors into a backdoor HOA? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Actually, I think we're pushing up on our time limit. Anybody else want to give a quick comment? No? Okay. Next, we will move on to matters of council schedule. And in this category, I would like to remind everybody that on October 9th, our next meeting, it'll be a special session to vote on the three ordinances that comprise the budget of the Civil City, of the utilities, and of Bloomington Transportation Corporation. And then our next regular session for other legislation will be on October 16th. Any other scheduling items, Deputy Attorney Kulak? Or colleagues? Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thanks. Two things, I guess. Number one is I wish we had heard this tonight and gotten to appropriately vote no on it. That would have been my preference. It's so hard that we didn't get to have any debate at all, you know? I mean, we didn't get to hear from the public. We also didn't get to hear from council. So that's really difficult. A second, I do think you... I'm just saying, I don't think you can keep Zoom open, because I don't think that you all can stay here, up here, and like, kind of conduct a casual meeting after the meeting is over. I think if you like, want to go out and talk to folks, you can. But like, I don't think you can like, hybrid-keep the council meeting open since it was voted to not, you know?
Yeah, I think there are some open-door law concerns about that as well. Councilmember Zulik?
Out of that issue, and also just respect to our council staff who are not expecting to stay here post-meeting, I would suggest that council members who are interested in hearing feedback take the meeting outside so that our staff is not kept here unduly late. And for anyone who's on Zoom, my email is sydney.zulik@bloomington.in.gov. Please send me a note. I'm happy to have a quick call, just to hear your feedback. And I'm sorry that tonight did not turn out the way that everyone expected in terms of ability to give feedback.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Just one additional note that everyone needs to be mindful of core meeting and open-door law requirements. If we choose to engage in conversations with members of the public following this meeting, there's probably like, one-on-one conversations, or it shouldn't be a quote-unquote "meeting." Like, it will not be. So just, please keep that in mind.
Yes, and I'm sorry I didn't think of that sooner, that we can't just keep sitting up here because it's not an officially noticed meeting at that point. Councilmember Stossberg?
I also, I guess, want to say that like, I logged into Zoom real fast, and so I can stay on Zoom afterwards as well if staff makes me a co-host. And I don't know, in light of all of that, if that's allowed. But I guess I'm going to echo Councilmember Rosenbarger that it might have been nice to be able to debate this tonight to make sure that the public kind of knew where we were actually at on this subject as council members. And I'm also kind of disappointed in my colleagues that we did not allow public comment on the Green Acres thing tonight. And I guess that's all I'll say in this context.
And I would like to note, we are deviating from the agenda right now because we did not have a discussion of the foregoing process on the agenda, but I will allow it, I guess, under privilege of the chair? Is that a thing? Councilmember Daley?
Well, I just want to explain the other side of it, which is we were voting it down, and it's going to be coming back in a different form. So there wasn't an actual topic to be discussing, since it was getting a no. And I'm always happy to hear back from constituents. But we don't know what we're going to be debating on if this is coming back in a different form. I'm happy to have emails. I'm happy to meet with anybody who wants to, but that was why I voted the way that I did.
All right. Is there any other matter of council scheduling? Deputy Attorney Kulak?
Aside from what you referenced, I don't believe... So if you mentioned the adoption hearing next week, that's on the schedule for the three appropriation ordinances?
Very good. And I did hear Councilmember Assari ask about a special session on October 30th. And yes, we... I called that last time. We will have a special session on October 30th to discuss the salary ordinances. All right, well, I am happy to talk to folks out in the atrium after the meeting. And as many of my colleagues said, I also welcome emails and phone messages, and I will return calls if people want to discuss Green Acres further. But with that, I think we shall adjourn. Thank you.